Call to order. Welcome to Lamore City Council, Chambers 429 C Street. Please silence all electronic devices of those in attendance. Thank you. Five thirty study session, SS dash one, City Council applicants of District C and District E. Mr. Olson?
So, good evening, Mayor and council members. We're going to pass this one along to Janie Benegas, the City Clerk and election official for the city.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. What we have before you are the City Council applicants for District C and District E. At this time, we will allow the applicants that are here the opportunity to provide additional information to you at a time limit of three minutes. However, you do have additional timeframe of up to seven minutes to ask questions for a total of ten minutes each candidate. I will be doing it on, in alphabetical order, with, starting with District C, because that's the way it was written in the staff report itself. It wasn't based on the timeframe received, it was just based on alphabetical.
Proceed.
Council, can we take just a two-minute break to check something procedurally? I believe the resolution may say something different.
What, resolution number twenty-eight?
Resolution right here. No, that may be their live skin.
Twenty nineteen eighteen.
It's hot, huh? Yeah, I'm not the only one sweating.
Before that, before.
Can you hear me?
Is this meeting, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
So, there's the, that's the staff report. It should have. Each other to have no more than ten minutes each. Resolution.
We're back from our short break.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, applicants have up to ten minutes each. That includes any time, any question and answer, any additional information that they would like to provide. So, they're not necessarily limited to the three. It is a total of ten minutes for their whole entire presentation, so to speak. So, we are going alphabetical, as that's the way I have listed on the staff report. We are going to start with District C first. Just to note that we do have two applicants that are out of town today. It is one that they, it was pre-planned, so it wasn't one that they were able to make any type of changes. We have Tom Reed and James Avihill. They are both out of town. So, we will start again with District C. We have Frank Gornick.
Good evening, council members. My name is Frank Gornick. I reside at six five six Cambria Lane, Lamore. Resided in that residence for about twenty-three years, going on twenty-four years. All that time, been a resident of Lamore. I'm retired from West Hills Community College District. I had the pleasure of serving our district for over twenty-three years. And with the prior councils and with our board trustees, was instrumental in bringing West Hills Community College District to West Hills College of Lamore, to the city of Lamore. During that time, I've had ample opportunity to work with numbers of boards, both elected and volunteer. I also serve on a number of, I've served on elected boards as well as volunteer boards. Currently, I'm on the Community College Foundation Board in Sacramento, which encompasses the entire state of California, and serves as the foundation arm for the community college system. My interest in running, which I'm sure that's what you're interested in, is I think, I haven't, to be honest with you, I haven't been pleased with what I've read the last year and a half. And I think we all, we all wear the same jersey. We're all residents of the same city. We need to pull together for the benefit of the city and the people who elect us and serve. And I'd like to be a part of doing that, working on a team that focuses on the vision of the city of Lamore and what we can become, and not focus on what we don't have, but what we can achieve together. And that's been my mantra throughout my career, is to build things. And we have a significant investment in this community, West Hills Community College of Lamore does. One of our bond measures was to provide the infrastructure, not only for the college, but to assist with the laprino and to oversize the water and sewer lines to that area to assist in development. And I know as a city, we don't want to grow so fast, but we certainly want to grow to keep our expenses ahead of our expenditures. And one of the ways we do that is through bringing housing and commercial development, as well as jobs. And I think I've had an opportunity to see how sometimes our policies work against job creation. And I'd like to be involved in that discussion in terms of how the city moves forward with making sure that we're a good partner with not only business, but also with the citizens. And with that, I'll just entertain any, I should say that my wife also, former Gloria Garcia, was a Lamore High graduate and West Hills attendee, which is where I met her a long time ago, fifty-two years ago, to be honest. We've been married. We have three children, Frank and Victoria and Christina, all residing in this community as well.
That's it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really want to speak for ten minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, it's open for any questions at this point that you might want to direct towards Mr. Gornick?
No, I think you presented yourself.
You're, the board that you said you sit on in Sacramento?
The community college system.
And you currently sit on that?
Yes, yes, as one of the board members.
So, what, how much time does that entail, just out of curiosity?
We meet four times a year.
Four times a year?
Yeah. Usually in the afternoon, so it's.
And my one last question I got for you is, you said build things, you like to build things. What do you see that Lamore needs to be built?
Well, I think, I think what I'd like to focus on is consistency of how we build things. You know, for the last, one of my good friends, who's not with us anymore, Don Warkantin, myself, and Jeff Levinson, we had a habit, we still, Jeff and I still do, we walk the city every night, five nights a week. And, you know, you walk the streets, you can see some inconsistencies with what we do. Like, on some streets, there's ample street lighting, and there's other streets, you wonder what happened here. You know, nobody even put in a light bulb, you know. And, and also on some key intersections now, there's not a lot of lighting. And so, you wonder about that inconsistency. It doesn't make us look good, you know, from a, it almost looks, parts of our city are unincorporated as opposed to incorporated. And so, those are the kinds of things I'd like to focus on to make sure that we're, you know, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is and those kinds of areas. A recent example is, we've got a brand-new subdivision going in here on, with Lennar. And I noticed the sidewalks on the, on the north side of, that would be Hanford Armada, right?
Mm-hmm.
They're not as wide as the sidewalks on the south side. Why? And that would be my question. And, you know, what did we, what did we give up to do that? We created more green space for landscape lighting districts, which residents aren't happy with. And so, you know, my, my point is that it doesn't look consistent as you, as you drive into the city. And so, those are the kinds of things that I think as a council, we could work together on with the city staff and pull together. I, I think our refuse department, the guys who pick up the trash, I think they do a great job. I've always seen them, if it's a windy day, stuff blows out of the truck, I see them getting out of the truck, picking stuff up, throwing it back in. I mean, or somebody forgets to put the can out, they're out there. I think we need to say thank you to a lot of our staff for jobs that they do, and, and build a team, and get us focused and moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gornick.
Thank you.
Our next applicant for District C will be Christopher Scaldi.
Good evening, council members and the public. My name is Chris Scaldi. I live at two one eight Del Monte Place in Lamore. I've lived at that residence for eight years in the city of Lamore for thirty-eight years. And I'm married to my wife Angela for twenty-one years. I have three children, a seventeen-year-old son, who's a senior at LHS, a fourteen-year-old daughter, who's going to be a freshman at LHS, and a nineteen-year-old daughter, who's going to be a second year over at Cal Poly in San Luis Obispo. I, myself, born in Lamore, at Lamore NAS. I graduated from Central Union School and Lamore High School. Started my college career at, at West Hills Community College and felt the need to get away, so I moved over to Questa College in San Luis Obispo, graduated from there, and then went to Cal Poly myself, majoring in ag science, minoring in ag business, with the intent of being a teacher. I, I did get my credential through Cal Poly, and I've taught at Jameson High School here at Lamore Union High School District for the past twenty years, getting ready to start my twenty-first year. While with Lamore Union High School District, I have coached football for eighteen years. And I started the athletics program at Jameson High School to give those kids the opportunity to be part of a team and to have some responsibility. Because just like a CIF athlete, they have to go to school, they have to get grades, and they have to have behavior in order to participate. And, and for a lot of my students, they haven't had that opportunity in their lives. So, I thought it was instrumental in starting athletics with other continuation schools throughout Tulare and Kings County. In two thousand and fifteen, I was the California Continuation Education Association's State Teacher of the Year, and they're basically the liaison through Sacramento. They're, they're the coup de grace of continuation schools in the state of California. So, I also enjoy volunteering. I volunteered at Lamore Volunteer Fire Department for twenty-plus years, and I've acted in almost every capacity there. I've been a fireman, an engineer, I've been a crew captain, I've been on the ratings committee, the membership committee, executive committee. I was instrumental in starting a retirement system for those guys, so that when they put in fifteen years, the chief at the time, G. Miguel, and the city council at the time, said that we can, we can start this. So, after fifteen years of active service in the fire department, a fireman, when they turn sixty, gets a seventy-five-dollar check. But I was the one that kind of, that got behind that thing, and I made it happen. So, I'm not just part of an organization, I'm somebody that goes in there and fights for the people there. I've also been involved in all kinds of youth sports, volunteering my time through Lamore Youth Football, Lamore Youth Softball, Little League Soccer. I've been on boards for the youth sports booster clubs. So, I think that I know Lamore. And, you know, most people say they bleed red and all that stuff. Other than fire department stuff, I don't own anything red, because I'm a Lamore kid. And I love this city like it was, it's part of me, it really is. So, why, why am I doing this? Why? I've got a whole lot of stuff going on, just like everybody else, that's probably wanting to be a member of the Lamore City Council. And, and you might think you're half crazy, and, and we might possibly be. But I remember being a little kid and walking to Pioneer Square and going to Sprouse Ritz, because I needed to get my mom a present. And then, you know, you can look at the hamsters, and then you can go down to Beano's, and you could buy some T-shirts and jeans and stuff. You go down to the record store, and I can't for the life of me remember the name of the record store. But we want that stuff back. I want that back. We need that back. We don't need to go to Hanford, Tulare, Visalia, wherever it might be. We need to have some stuff there, and I think I can be an integral part of bringing that stuff back with you guys. Downtown used to be great. I mean, you had a couple different hardware stores, you had the pastime. If you needed a nice outfit, you can go down to John Gerald's or Cleo's Clothes, man. It was, it was good. And now, you walk down D Street, and unfortunately, there's too many vacant buildings. And I would like to see those filled back up with people and get the community back downtown. Like you said, I was born in Lamore. I was raised by, in a, in a single-parent family, my mother. My dad was nice enough to leave when I was two, and I don't want the sob story. But I was raised by a single mom. And, and I know, especially thirty-five, forty years ago, when I was a kid, what we had to do as kids. And I know we've, we've done a whole lot of stuff, a whole lot more than when I was here, but I think we need to continue that and give programs for all those kids, because we know the kids who are busy doing stuff aren't getting into trouble. And, and I live that stuff every day as a teacher, and seeing the kids and doing bad things and coming out of, you know, out of juvenile hall, or even worse sometimes. So, like I said, I think I'm on the right, or not I'm, we're on the right track, but I think we can build on those, on those, on those blocks and make it bigger and better for, and accessible for all the kids, not just the ones that can, that can pay to go play Lamore Youth Football, because that, that costs a lot of money. But we need to make accessible activities for all youth. So, I've been approached by several different people about trying to be appointed for this, turning in my application. And, and I would sit down or stand up, and I'd talk to them and say, here's why I want to do it. And each and every one said, hey, I believe in you, and I think that you would be a great candidate, a great city councilman, so I'm going to step out of it. I'll let you put your name in it. I know that you have my core values, that I can come and talk to you. One of those gentlemen is a lifelong Lamore resident and law enforcement officer, his name's Mark Bevins. We sat, we talked for about a half an hour, and he said, I'm taking my, my name out of the hat. So, also, ex-councilman Chad Billingsley, he talked to me and said, he was actually one of the ones that encouraged me to, to come up here and apply for this. So, and even today on Facebook, he threw out, you know, you have my support for tonight, and I basically saying, good luck. So, in, in final, I've worked hard for the last twenty-plus years for the Lamore Volunteer Fire Department, for the citizens of Lamore, and for the city of Lamore. I put them at the forefront. I think that I can put that same time, energy, and dedication with you guys up there on, as a member of the Lamore City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. You got any questions for him, Dave?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
It's just, your, your occupation is, is schoolteacher.
Yes, sir.
Now, on the council, you know, there's a lot of boards and commissions and things of that nature, the council members and, you know, others, you know, that we attend and stuff of that. Do you see any issues?
Obviously, I'd have to see what committees I'd be on and when they meet. I can't tell you. I have, I think, a hundred and thirty-seven sick days. So, I could bit those out into hours and stuff.
Kind of do like the same thing, the rest of us that we work.
Yes, sir.
And you, so, yeah, I have to do the same thing.
I spoke to my principal about it, and she's supportive of me being on the city council. And like I said, my, my, my school's behind me, and if I need to be off, like I said, I have the time banked, and I can make that happen.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Chris.
Yes.
Mr. Scaldi.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm sure like myself, when you got into the fire department, you probably had an idea of what kind of time and effort it would take to do that.
I thought I had an idea.
You thought you did, yeah. And it turned out to be almost double.
I would say that periodically, it's even more than double, but yes.
So, kind of walking in the same steps, sitting on this council is a little bit like getting in that fire department. I, I knew that there was a lot to do with sitting on this council, and it's about double what I expected. Would you be willing to take somewhat of a step away from the fire department? I'm not saying to like, give it up, but it definitely.
I was making sure you're done with the question.
Yeah, I think you know what I'm asking.
No, I understand what you're asking. Yeah, I can definitely take a step back from the fire department. I know most people aren't, aren't familiar with the fire department policies, but, but you're allowed to, to become an honorary firefighter, where you get all the social aspects and, and, and stuff after fifteen years. And I didn't want to just do it for that fifteen years. I'm, I'm part of something for the long haul. So, to answer the question, yes, I'm willing to step back a little bit. And if it came down to it, like I said, I've met that honorary status, and, and if this came, push the shove, you know, obviously, I would weigh both sides, but I think that we all need to grow. And, and I've often questioned my, my status with the fire department. Obviously, I'm a little bit older than I was twenty years ago, twenty-one years ago, twenty and a half years ago when I got in. So, it is certainly something to consider. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving on to District E. Our first, it's, please note that we do have two applicants that were not able to be present. That would be Gwendolyn Landris and Willard Redarmel. So, our first applicant, again in alphabetical order, will be Hugh Allen.
Good evening, council. My name is Hugh Allen. I've resided in the city of Lamore for almost seventeen years in September. I'm a schoolteacher at Avonale State Prison. I work with inmates. I've been doing that for over twenty years. I reside at eleven thirty-three Pine Court, and I've lived, like I said, there for almost seventeen years. I was very skeptical about running for District E. When I told people that I was doing this, they were like, are you crazy? Do you want to be a part of that circus? Because after all, this council has not had a good reputation lately in the news. And I thought, well, I've never served on anything that could actually be something positive, leave a positive mark. So, I thought I'd throw my name into the hat. I'm concerned about Lamore, especially with the growth, public safety, those issues, like I'm sure most people here have those concerns. What direction is Lamore going? Those are just my concerns, and that's why I decided to step up and put my name in the hat. Any questions?
What do you teach?
I teach ABE one, which is Adult Basic Education with people with below a fourth-grade reading level. But I've taught all classes out there, academic class.
Oh, well, that was my only curiosity. But I thank you for, for coming down, I really do.
Thank you.
Did you have any experience in military, or?
Uh, no, none of that. I graduated from UC Davis with a degree in history, went to Fresno State, got my credential, and pretty much right into government work with state.
Okay.
So, I know how government works.
Absolutely. All right. Mr. Brown?
No, thank you very much for, for coming and going through this. It's, it's, it's not easy, I understand. And I have a question, though, I do. Direction, you talked about direction. What is, what is your, what is your thoughts on direction of the city?
Well, I'm concerned about the growth and how we're going to pay for certain things. Right now, we have a volunteer fire department. If Lamore keeps growing, eventually, they're going to have to have a permanent fire department. How are we going to pay for that? Are we going to tax people? Are we going to tax the home builders that come to build the new homes? I know there's talk about the city growing north, and I'm concerned about those homes. You walk around, I live, well, I wouldn't say an older apartment. My home was built in nineteen ninety-eight. Between homes, there's a lot of distance. You walk around these new homes out here. As a home buyer, I don't find that attractive to be three feet next to your neighbor. You know, our job should be, those people out at the base, make sure that the homes here are attractive enough for them to want to stay here after they leave the military. And when I walk around or, and I see these new homes, I'm just like, yeah, they're nice on the outside, but who wants to be three feet from their neighbor?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Our next applicant is Guadalupe Capozzi.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. First of all, I want to say it's really nice to see that so many people actually are interested in serving the community. I live at thirteen eighty-seven Mission Drive in the city of Lamore. I've lived here for a little over a year, but I've resided in Kings County for over seventeen years. I lived in Hanford. I've also, just want to give you a little bit of my, start with my, my professional background. As it relates to my time in Kings County, I've been a parole agent here in Kings County for over a decade. I've worked for the Department of Corrections for over twenty-two years in the capacity of a correctional officer, a correctional counselor, and then I came out as an agent. I'm a parole agent to supervisor. In two thousand and thirteen, I was voted the Safety Officer of the Year for Kings County. In my time and living in Kings County, I've served on numerous boards, a board for a basketball league for several years, where I was president and vice president. I currently serve on the Champions Board, and I've been on that board since two thousand and thirteen. Since my time with the Champions Board, we've actually doubled in size and created a residential inpatient drug treatment program here in Lamore, out in the country, which houses over forty-five men in Kings County and gives them the opportunity to get the resources that they need to reintegrate and to become sober and to show backup to their communities and their families. Prior to working for the Department of Corrections, I was a consultant with the State Department of Health and Communicable Disease Prevention. During my time there, we had a lot of one-of-a-kind educational programs that we created with different types of, different types of ideas, educational ideas in different communities throughout the state of California. I also worked for the County Health Department for over a decade, helping create educational programs in different parts of the state that didn't have health education preventative programs in place. Want to talk a little bit about also my volunteer work. I am a teacher with Coninia. I have been on a discipleship program there that's called Breakout. This is my fourth year. And the discipleship program is for kids that are about third and fourth grade. It's a four-year program. At the end of the program, they graduate, and then we go on a mission trip to Skid Row for a week with the Dream Center. And, and what it is is basically, we, we teach young kids how, well, first of all, they learn about the Bible, but secondly, they learn how to tell others about it. And the concept is that, that we're really here to serve. And that takes me to my, my personal mantra with my, with my own life and my, my core values. And my core values are faith, family, and community. I have committed most of my life to serving the community, whether it's in a volunteer basis or in a professional basis. In my job as a parole agent and now a parole agent supervisor, there are many programs that I was a part of developing. One was called the A Team. It was a One was called the A Team. It was a program in which we brought ex-felons, uh, back into the prisons. And it was, um, like a peer educational program where they would talk to some of these folks who had made decisions in their life that weren't too good and gave them insight on how to turn those things around. So, um, um, along with my core values of faith, family, and community, I, I feel that characteristically as a person, I am a visionary. When I come to a place, um, specifically professionally, or, um, if it's one of my volunteer, um, types of, um, activities, that I always look at ways to make it better. And so, um, my education, I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with an emphasis on restorative justice. And so the restorative justice piece that is, I believe important is, is a community piece and how we, we deal with people who offend and how we actually bring them into the fold again. Because the reality is, is that when folks are released, they're, they're here and, and, and we want to make sure that there's a restorative piece in the way that we deal with folks who are, um, convicted felons and who make mistakes. And so the, I guess the big question is, is why I'm interested in the city council. And so first of all, I absolutely love Lemoore, even though I haven't lived here that long. I've worked in Kings County for over a decade. Like I said, as an agent, I was assigned to Lemoore. Um, the, there were five years that I worked as a, um, higher sex offender agent and Lemoore was the area that I worked in, Kings County, um, as a whole. Um, and as I was looking for a place to move, uh, I settled on Lemoore because I'd worked here for so long and it interacted with the community so much. And just, it's just this gem of a community. Um, the gentleman was talking about West Hills earlier and just, you know, I, I see West Hills and I see what a gem it is to the community. I see the base and I see what a gem it is to the community. And I have interacted with lots of people who aren't from here. And that's what I really love about the community because it's very diverse in nature culturally, because there's so many people that came here for the base and then loved it and stayed here. And so they stayed here and they raised their kids here. And so as a result, even folks who've been here for, you know, 30 years or 40 years, if you go back a generation or two, they're actually not, they weren't originally from here. They came from somewhere else because of the base, or they migrated here for the work and they stayed here because it's such a doll of a community. So I feel like I can be an asset. I know that I can be an asset to the community. I, um, love the community that I live in and I feel strongly that if there isn't something that you see that needs to, that needs some help or that needs some pushing along, that we should raise our hand and be that help instead of complaining. And so I'm here for that reason. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. So I appreciate the fact that you called it a doll or a gem of a community and you moved here a year ago. I, I'm just kind of curious, where did you live prior?
In Hanford.
Okay.
Yeah, I was in Hanford for 16 years before I moved here.
Well, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next applicant is Jim Kilner.
Good evening. Um, thank you very much for the opportunity. Uh, this is, uh, this is kind of a first for me to, to be wanting to be appointed to a board. Um, I, uh, I live at 338 East Deodore Lane. Uh, it's, uh, it's been an amazing, uh, time. We actually moved into my in-laws' house when my father-in-law passed away. It, it was a ha- a house that, uh, my, my wife was raised in. So, uh, he was ill. He lived with us, uh, when I, I lived in Armona and he was ill and moved with us. I see the look on your face about Armona. Okay. Uh, anyway, uh, he, um, moved in with us and when, when he decided he was, uh, getting short on time, he said, "Come, I'd like to pass away at my house." And so my wife and I took him, we moved him there. My daughter and her family moved into my house. The gentleman became a pillar of health and we lived there for eight years. Uh, yeah, we became homeless. So, uh, so anyway, uh, he did pass. So, uh, you know what? We, we really like the, the, uh, the city of Lemoore. Uh, like I said, my wife's a local here. I started in Kings County Fire Department in, uh, November 1979. I worked my way all the way up through the ranks and in, uh, while that, I was assigned to the Armona Fire Station. That's when we bought the house in Armona. Uh, was involved in youth sports, uh, baseball, uh, with the Little League, the Football League and things like that. Um, it's a lot easier to be a, a member of a board, especially president, when your kids aren't playing in those leagues. And it was, um, it, it was a good, uh, opportunity for me. Uh, the Armona, uh, community put together the community center there and, uh, in Armona with, uh, an agreement between the volunteer firefighters, the, uh, the county and the school district. And then they decided to open up the gym. So I was on the Parks Recreation Commission. I started there. And then I went from there, I went to the Community Services District and I served, uh, a term, a term there, learned a lot. Uh, from there, I went to the Armona School Board and, uh, I spent one term on the Armona School Board. Uh, after that, I decided it really wasn't, uh, for me. So instead of just walking away, I, uh, did the same thing that I'm doing here, was appointed to the County Board of Education. Was there 16 years and enjoyed it. When I requ- when I retired from the fire department, uh, uh, I went, started to go fishing. Uh, from 2000, from 2003 to 2011, I was actually the County Fire Chief. Uh, I dealt with city councils, uh, by contract with the city of Corcoran, the city of Avonel, uh, the tribal council out of Santa Rosa, and the Kings County Board of Supervisors. And trying to keep all those people straight in my mind was, uh, was amazing, but I survived. They didn't fire me. I walked away unscathed. Um, uh, a lot of, a lot of politics, a lot of things involved. I was the Homeland Security Grant Rider for about six or eight years, uh, which, uh, the operational area, the whole entire county, including the, uh, the cities. We purchased, uh, uh, equipment for the, uh, uh, local government agencies, public works, uh, law enforcement, fire. Uh, we were a- able to get a lot of, uh, ho- uh, I would say self-defense type stuff, really good stuff, uh, for nothing because of, uh, we had very good participation with everybody, um, all of the, the cities and the county and, and things like that. Um, it was, um, it wa- it was pretty interesting. After that, I became, uh, I was on the CalSeq Committee, which was, uh, I was the vice president. That's a statewide, uh, uh, committee that, uh, we changed the, uh, radio, uh, the communications throughout the operational area. Uh, we changed your frequencies from, uh, UHF to VHF so that Kings County was not an island anymore. All the other fire agencies in the state were all on VHF frequencies. Uh, Kings County was on UHF. So we could talk to each other, but not anybody else coming in. So we fixed that. Uh, uh, we fixed that just before I left. Um, uh, other than that, I, uh, after that, I went fishing. I have a special needs granddaughter who has no immune system. So my wife started, um, babysitting. And with that, I sat in a chair. Everybody I've talked to says if you sit in a chair, you're going to die. So I sat there about, uh, uh, a, a while, a year or so, a year and a half, and, uh, gained about 40 pounds and had an opportunity to go to work for Rogers Helicopters. Kings County, I don't know if you were, uh, if you remember, but we had a fire helicopter at Kings County Station Four on Houston Avenue. Uh, where else do you put a guy that's 100 pounds overweight and afraid of heights, but you put him in the helicopter? It's pretty cool. So, um, we worked that deal out and, uh, all truth be known, if, uh, there's no members of the, uh, the county here, uh, Kings County Fire balanced their budget just by, just by renting that helicopter, the state and the fed agencies. So we, uh, we thought out of the box and we balanced our budget and, uh, we thought that was pretty sharp. Uh, became the safety director for, uh, Rogers Helicopters. Uh, been there almost six years. To answer the question, uh, I was working full-time. Uh, I told Mr. Rogers, Robin Rogers, that, uh, I was, uh, starting to wind down and, um, the directors, a couple of safety officers for the company that worked for me. Uh, I told them I was starting to wind down, that this would absolutely be my last fire season. It's becoming, uh, too much like firework. And, uh, when this opportunity came up, I had some, uh, I'd, I'd been watching the news and, uh, I think that I can bring a positive team player. I think that, uh, the, 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 uh, the city is awesome. I sit in my front yard and watch, uh, people walk by with their families and the, the kids on the, on the bicycles and things like that, walking down, uh, the sidewalks of, of Deodore. And, uh, that's where we need to be. And, uh, I, my hat's off to the law enforcement, the fire people here. Uh, the comment, uh, about, about a, uh, a paid fires, fire department. Um, Lemoore Fire Department is good. Uh, I'll, I'll tell you, they've, uh, yeah, I was a paid, I was, I was a paid firefighter for just short of 38 years and aside from a few people, they're all right. But, uh, anyway, uh, you've got a good thing going on here and I'd like to be a part of that. I'm a team player. I'd like to be a part of that team. I'm easy to talk to. The downside of me is I'm a workaholic. Uh, if you want me to do something, I'll do it till it's done and done right. Uh, I, I had no idea about FAA or NTSB or anything like that. And now I'm a director of a helicopter company. I know that helicopters, when something goes wrong, they don't glide very far. They just crash. So I've had to learn a lot. I've had to deal with those people on a, on an o- o- audit and awesome, uh, uh, awesome basis. You know, they, they're right there. And so, uh, I've had to learn. I promise I'll learn. Um, I've, like I said, I've been on many boards and I promise you, I'll do the, do the best I can. Questions?
Well, it feels weird calling you Mr. Kilner and for surely not Jim.
Then you insult me.
So chief, we'll just leave it at that. That's how I've known you. I, I just want to say thank you for coming down. I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just, I'm shocked to see you here and I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see you here.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thanks. That's all.
I'm glad you haven't run me off yet. Uh, I will tell you that the people that I've talked to, they're in the, the top nine of this, uh, of this contest, if you will. Uh, however you pick is going to be awesome for, for my district. And I think that, uh, you've got a tough pick ahead of you. Two of them. Questions? Other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, chief.
Our next applicant, our next applicant is Patricia Matthews.
Hello, my name is Patricia Matthews. I live at 195 West Burlwood Lane. I was assuming we would have the three-minute time limit, so I made sure I wrote down, so I didn't go off topic. But, um, if, um, one of the things that, some of the things that I would like to bring, um, if I'm appointed city council, um, I would hope to bridge the communication gap that I've noticed between council, city staff, and, uh, citizens of my district. I'm just in talking to my neighbors and people in, in my community. I have realized that they're not really aware of everything going on. I'm not sure exactly why, but I'm a talker, so, um, I'll make sure that they're informed. Um, my goal is to make our city, city better than it is today, um, which it's pretty great. So, um, it's a pretty high goal. Um, uh, the only way that I see that we can do this is to listen to the citizens, especially, I would especially listen to those in my district. Uh, I don't have all the answers and I know that my opinion is not the only one that matters. And it will take all of us working together and bringing ideas to achieve the common goal or goals. Um, I walk my district daily, I mean, my neighborhood daily, and I've met and formed relationships with many of my amazing neighbors. We have great communication and I would love to widen that communication throughout my district. And this would give me a great opportunity and reason why, um, to do that. Uh, I, my hope is to help solve the issues that the city of Lemoore is facing while representing the districts of dis- the constituents of District E and bringing a different perspective to the table, hopefully. Um, I would also love to organize a volunteer base of the, uh, those willing to be, to use their time and skills to help better our city while being in a great asset in saving revenue as well as building community. Um, uh, on my application, um, a big part of my life for the last, a lot of years, let's just say that, um, has been serving. Um, I've been a stay-at-home mom for the last 20 years. Um, so my kids and I have volunteered in everything that we can, um, with our church in, uh, the community where our church is. And my kids have followed that in their high school careers and hope they continue to do that when they go off to college. As well as building community, community to me is very important. I grew up in Lemoore. I've lived here my whole life, except for a couple of years. I moved to Hanford till I hooked my husband and then brought him back here. Um, but I, community is a big, big thing to me. Um, it's one of the reasons why I love to walk my neighborhood and talk to anyone that's out, all of my neighbors. Um, I would love to also see the youth in our community more involved. We do have a lot of sports-related things that are offered. Um, and as the gentleman said earlier, not, that may not be every kid's thing or it may not be affordable. So I'd love to, um, find other ways to get them involved. Um, because kids that are involved tend to be more self-confident, have more pride in their community, and that's always a good thing. Um, and it's easy for them to disconnect when they don't feel valued or needed. And I want to do anything that I can to make them feel like they matter. Um, I love Lemoore. I love the people of Lemoore. And with my kids leaving for college, I'll have two in college this year, I will have plenty of time to devote back to the city that has given my family so much. Um, and I appreciate everything that, all the opportunities that my family has been given, um, by living here. And I just wanted to let you know that you all are doing a great job. And I would be grateful and honored to be able to work alongside each and every one of you to help make our city better. That was record time for me, so. Any questions?
I, I, I do think, I see you sitting in the audience often, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
All the time.
I was just making sure you're who I thought you were.
I know I have. I'm not wearing a t-shirt. I dressed up for you guys.
Yeah, I liked a few of your t-shirts.
I've, I've been attending council meetings for quite some time now.
Yeah.
Anything else? Really?
Thank you.
Okay.
Our next applicant is John Plord.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager and attorney for the city, I want to thank you for your service. It's been a rough, uh, well, let's say, interesting last few years. And, uh, when this opening came up, as a matter of fact, tonight, I didn't really expect to have anything to say because I was told this was optional. So here I am. Decisions were made by people that show up. And, uh, I was appointed, uh, twice before, once to take, uh, Tom Purvis's place back in 2003. At 2004, at the end of his term, I went to the Planning Commission, spent maybe a year, year and a quarter or year and a half there. Linda LaHottney decided to move out of town and they had another contest for this seat. And I was selected to serve about a year, year and a half of her term. I was lucky enough to win election in 2008. 2010, I served, uh, as mayor pro tem till 2012. 2012, I left office. And, uh, I realized then that probably the city council was the hardest job I ever had. If you do it right, it's hard. If you make every meeting, it's, it's doubly hard. And if you attend all the, uh, collateral duties, the committee meetings that take you away from the city and you find out what's happening at, uh, outside the city that you report back, it's difficult. I think I've attended, uh, five League of California City Conferences and was the voting member for three of them. So the council appointed me to vote on behalf of the city. And at that time, it, what you're doing is you're asked to, um, make a decision. The city, the League of California Cities is a, a group, uh, that represents 58 counties and 484 cities. So when they have a conference, that's their one opportunity every year to, uh, So when they have a conference, that's their one opportunity every year to see what the cities want the county league to do. And so I was happy to take part in that process. So basically set policy for the league. So I'm looking at being one of nine. And if eight people choose to run next year, I will vote for one of them. Because they took the time to put their papers in to be up here. Might even be me, you never know. like I said, I really didn't come here, I'm a doer, not a talker. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. As long as it's not one question with twenty-five different parts. So I'm at your disposal.
Yeah, I, so I, I want to understand this. You said you were appointed twice and ran and won an election once? Or were you appointed two different times?
I was appointed to, to take Tom Purvis's place when he took a job in the Bay Area.
Okay.
And they had an appointment process similar to this and I was selected. And then at the end of his term, there was another election and I didn't run. Or I did run, but I didn't get the office. I was appointed to the Planning Commission. About a year and a quarter, a year and a half later, Linda LaHottney left. They had another appointment process and I left the Planning Commission to take a job on the council.
So you took it a second time?
I, I was appointed a second time.
Yeah, and now you're here back for more.
I see your point and I, I agree with you. But the four, the four-year, the four-year term just wasn't the same as serving, you know, two, one and a half-year terms.
I, I, I got you.
I do, I do have to say that if you, if you come to the council without reading the agenda package,
You lost.
You're, you're wasting your time, you know? There never has been council members that the first time they saw the agenda packages when they got there. And if you don't do your homework, you're not coming prepared and it takes time to do it. fortunately, it's all electronic now and you don't have to wait for, it used to be we'd do things on paper and you have to go to get the document and read it. And now that it's online, it makes it a heck of a lot easier, especially if you, if it's a PDF and you can use the search function within a PDF file.
Well, that was the only question I had and, and I thank you for not just the first, but then the second and then being brave enough to come back for a third. But thank you. So that's all I've got to say.
No, appreciate that.
Notice. I want to thank you for coming up and as I asked before, so you know, as you know, this, 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 this job here, there's a lot of other duties that we perform just besides coming here, you know, twice a month. And you've, you stated that you were on other boards and commissions, well, when you were, when you were appointed before and then also elected. So you were, you, you ran for election and you, you, you won the election and then you also?
I, I don't have the list in front of me, but some of them were the Commission on Aging, the Kings County Action Organization. I was on the LAFCO, I was on K-CAG, I was on Transportation.
I got your list.
I wasn't on Waste Management.
You were on the Central Valley Rail, the Community and Aging area, the, the K-CAPDA, K-CAG. You were also on Aging Department Committees, Economic Department Committees, Gang Awareness. I mean, am I hitting them all? Kings County, the Vehicle Abatement and the Samuel King Air Board.
Yeah, I think I, I took a page off the internet that had the council, the council matrix, basically. And I was saying, geez, did I do all that?
Yeah.
I remember some of it, but some of it was in two thousand and three. I, I think the Commission on Aging, I fit right in. I was, I was understanding what they were saying the whole time. It's beneficial to the city to get that input. And I brought it back and assisted, you know, some of the council members that didn't have the opportunity to, to do that. But I was the vice chair and chair of the Cross Valley Rail Corridor, Joint Powers Authority. And we were having issues with farmers that had spur lines that were going north and south. The main corridor is east and west. And they didn't want the spur lines to be ripped up and made into roads and things like that, so. That was one of the big things. But we only met, met like once a quarter. A representative from Kern County and a representative from Visalia, Hanford and Lamoore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plord.
Yeah, I noticed you talked about all the, you expounded on all the things that you did for the city. And I noticed the other individuals that worked for the fire department volunteers, they talked about how long they served on the fire department. Can you talk about a little bit how long you served on the police volunteer?
Well, I bought a house in seven, and I was ordered here to represent the, the, let's say, I, I joined the Navy in sixty-seven. I ended up here in seventy-two. I bought a house here in seventy-eight. In eighty-one, I, I started the Neighborhood Watch Group in my neighborhood, which got me involved with the Police Department. After I retired from the Navy, I found myself with a lot of open time. So I got involved in doing a newsletter for the Police Department Neighborhood Watch Group. I did that in nineteen ninety-four and I still do it today. So twenty-five years of doing monthly newsletters, starting to look a lot alike nowadays. Then they had an opportunity for, in nineteen ninety-seven, they started a Volunteers and Policing Program at the Police Department. I didn't think it was going to go anywhere, so I didn't do anything for the first two, two classes. I got involved in a third class in nineteen ninety-eight. And I've been a volunteer in policing with the department for the last twenty-one years. And I have, you know, over thirty-six thousand hours of volunteer time.
Wow.
And it's been entertaining. See people come and go and we're always looking for people that would like to volunteer and be a volunteer to help out the Police Department. They're doing a national night out tonight, actually, and so if you'd like a hot dog. Does that answer your question?
Answered it quite well. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
And I got a flashing light now.
Time's up.
Am I done?
Yeah, you're done.
I appreciate that. I would like to recommend or recognize a former city council member and mayor sitting in the back row, in the second row. And there may be more back here, but thank you.
Our next applicant is Shelley Reese.
Good evening, council. First of all, before I get started, I just wanted to mention, when I picked up my application for the position, I was told that we were only able to turn me in just the application, not our resumes. So I wasn't given the opportunity to turn mine in. So I wanted to see if I could give it to the clerk and have me copies for you, if you're interested. Also, just to kind of let everybody know, I had a stroke five years ago, so that's why my voice is real weak and shaky. And that's why my handwriting is so horrible on my application, just so you guys know. Okay, just to let everyone know, my name is Shelley Reese and I have, I am, I feel I am a great candidate for city council for several reasons. I was both born and raised in Lamoore and raised my kids in Lamoore as well. I went to Leemore Schools and graduated from Leemore High School and College of Sequoias. My brother Alan Hinch and his family also live here in Lamoore and have an established business, Al's U-Haul and Propane, for those of you that know him. I love Lamoore and I take pride in the community. I have to tell you a little more about myself. I have worked for Santa Rosa Ranteria for going on twenty-two years in various management positions. I started off as a compliance supervisor for six and a half years. In that particular position, I was required to conduct audits and inspections of all areas of the casino and the warehouse. These inspections were conducted to ensure that they were in compliance with the minimal in control, minimal in control, I'm sorry, my speech is so bad. Minimum Internal Control Standards, NIGC, which stands for the National Indian Game Commission, and the Tribal Compact. I went on, I went on to work as an Assistant Surveillance, Assistant Surveillance Director for two and a half years overseeing the implementation of the new digital camera system in the casino and the hotel when we were building the new hotel. I, I managed several supervisors and staff. The Surveillance Department was in charge of overseeing the camera operations and monitoring all casino activity. I later took on the position as a benefits manager and have currently been in this position for thirteen years. I have handled, I handle all employee health insurance and all tribal member health insurance. I also currently oversee various other employee voluntary insurance programs, plans. I currently handle all work comp acts, process and claims. During my employment at Santa Rosa Ranteria, I have written various policies and procedures. And during my employment with Santa Rosa, I have worked with all levels of staff such as department directors, assistant directors, supervisors and line staff. Every year I have meetings with various insurance brokers and vendors and set up meetings to choose which kind of benefits we're going to go with for the year. I work with seventeen departments and tribal council on Santa Rosa Ranteria government side. I also work closely with Tachy Palace Finance Department, HR Department and Safety Department. I feel as a city, I feel as a Leemore City Council member, I can improve the relationship between city council and the tribe and make it better than it has been in the past. I want to represent the city of Leemore in a positive manner and help bring back the appeal to new, to business, to new business development. And I want to help create more jobs for the people of Lamoore. Thank you. I also, and just so that you know, also, at our, at the Government Center where I work, we also, every year, we have summer youth workers who come for the whole summer and they work with us. So we teach them job skills on what they're going to need as they grow up in, into the workforce. I also do every, since I've been working there, I implemented breast cancer awareness there at the, at the building where we give out stuff to the community. They come in for breast cancer awareness, making them more aware of breast cancer and other various cancers. I also participate in the Relay for Life and actually brought the whole Relay for Life. We got it going on the tribal side as well because it was always on Tachy's side, but we never had it on the government side. So now we have it on both sides and participate in that as well. Do you have any questions?
Anyone? Okay, now I've seen you in here, how long you been coming to city council now?
I think it's been over a year.
It's been over a year?
I think it's been over a year. I just started getting more.
I see you.
I started getting more involved because of, I started wanting to open my own business and started learning the process of how everything works here for us trying to open a business. I got kind of aggravated. So I started getting more involved and that's why I started really getting involved. And I really want to be a part of the council to make it a better process for businesses. And like I said, bring back the appeal to businesses, bring them to Leemore. I want our future, because I, my kids are all grown, but I have grandkids. And I want them to have more jobs, you know, be, more jobs available, have more options than having to go to Hanford, Visalia or Fresno to get a job. I, I love Lamoore and I think that we should have more businesses here and more job opportunities.
Okay, I noticed you said that you want to get a better relationship with the Tachy Tribe
Yes.
in the city of Lamoore. If I may, what would be your communication skills on doing that?
I have a really good relationship. Like I said, I've been working there for twenty-two years in various positions. So I've gained the trust of the tribal members as well as the tribal council and the other management on the Tachy side. So I feel I have a really good working relationship with a lot of the management. So I feel that it would be a great asset to building that relationship back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. I have another question.
I don't have, thank you though.
Thank you though.
And our last applicant is Tegan Winters.
Hello, council members, city attorney, city manager. My name is Tegan Winters. I live at eleven-ten Cousins Court, Lamoore, California. I was born in Hanford, California, to Terry and Debbie Davis in nineteen eighty. I was told when I came here, this was just going to be a brief thing. If you look at my package there, you're going to see about a four or five-page resume. And I'm not going to go over that, I'm just going to explain a little bit about myself. I love Lamoore. I went to Hanford, I begged my parents if I could go to Lamoore High, they said no. Every time we played sports, we'd play Lamoore, it was just that big community, everyone was nice. It was, I, I can't explain it, but as a kid, it was just great. So I left here, I joined the Navy, I left here in two thousand, went on the ships and everything. When I was in aircraft care, every time one of the squadrons would come for a power returnee, one of the states would be from Lamoore. And I'd get so excited because it's a piece of me from my hometown. So it, I mean, it just, Lamoore to me is hometown, that's what it is. And for me, as far as I went in my military career, the reason I went so far is because you got to know where you come from and you always got to be humble and that's who I am. I applied for this position because there was a vacancy position, that's why I did it. You guys are doing an excellent job. I love the new city, I love how we have Flowline, I love how we have the Labberit, I love how we have Bird Street. We have all this stuff that people can do now in Lamoore and I love it. And there's a lot more activities to do here. So I left here again, like I said, I left, joined the Navy, I was there until December two thousand and six. And then it was time to pick a set of orders, San Diego or Lamoore, California. Shockingly, I picked Lamoore, California because I wanted to come back. So instead of buying a house in Hanford by my family so they could help with the kids and stuff, I decided to stay in Lamoore. And we bought a house over there by the complex. And I got here and my daughter started playing sports, then I started coaching. I didn't know anyone, again, I'm from Hanford. So I started coaching these young ladies, teaching them about ethics, teaching them about leadership, teaching them about just sportsmanship in general. And then one of my big aspects is I just disliked when the ladies would say I couldn't go to college. You can do anything you want to do. I left here with a sea bag and I think fifty bucks in my pocket, I don't know, but I was able to do it. So I always like to do that and teach the girls. I'm saying young ladies because I didn't coach boys, I only coached girls. I think I coached boys once or twice. So I coached soccer and I coached softball. As you can read from my resume, I am a senior chief in the Navy Reserves, nineteen half years. So I do travel, I stopped traveling once I picked up senior chief, the job stopped, they didn't want to pay me as much. So I've been home a lot now. But with that aspect, I've been able to travel the world. And like I said, Lamoore's always been my home and I love it, but my kids are, now they're getting older and there's nothing to do. And when I say that, is there, I mean, we have the movies with other things, but my kids have been all around and there's really nothing they can do. Now, my daughter's the stellar, you know, small-town athlete, she does all that. Unfortunately, my son, he doesn't play sports, so he's at the skate park. So whenever we would travel, we always go to all the different skate parks in Virginia and in Hawaii and in Ventura, all that stuff. But I'm going to be really honest, when we take them here, I'm that mom who sits there, if you drive past there, you're going to see the lady with the gray truck, I'm her. Because I don't feel safe leaving my son there, I don't feel safe myself. And that's not what Lamoore is. Lamoore is that safe community that if I need to go to a neighbor and say we need help, they're there. That's what Lamoore is. So that's, that's one thing I'd like to see kind of improved is in that area. But anyways, like I said, I volunteer coaching. I also volunteer at a food bank in Springville, California. I do that with the church up there. I would like to see that a little more in Lamoore, food banks, they're not just for poor people, they're for anybody. Some people, especially with the heat going on right now, some people are getting six, seven hundred dollar electricity bills. $700 electricity bills, and how are they feeding their families? Some humble person, I'll tell you right now, especially if you have a correctional officer, veteran, or someone, they're not going to go ask for help. To some of those food banks, you don't need to show food, you don't need to show your paycheck. You don't need to do anything. You just go and you grab food and here's your food. And that helps our community. That's back to going to the basics with our community and doing things there. That, that's the certain things I'd like to see. I'm not, I'm just here, I'm not a politician. I don't do politics at all. As you see from my resume, I do a lot of the military stuff. I'm high up in that, but I love our city, and that's why I'm here. And I think I'd be a great addition. When you look at my qualifications, just a small town girl who travels the world and I come back to where I was born at, and I've been all over. So, do you have any questions for me? And actually, you're lucky, I did not talk the full 10 minutes, by the way. Anyone who knows me will tell you, you're very lucky on that. So, any questions for me?
You seem like you could talk.
Oh, I can talk. I'm being nice, like I said.
I, I don't have any questions. No.
Were you, were your parents military?
No, actually, my dad is a grain merchant. He actually, he went to Vietnam. He left Hanford, he was in Riverdale. My maiden name is Davis, so I am, I am related to a lot of people. I only know some of them, so if you ask if I'm related to that person, I maybe am, I don't know. My dad left here, went to jet engine mechanic school, hoping to get stationed in Lemoore, and he got stationed in Willbilly in Washington. So, then he worked for, out of Lemoore, Continental Grain, and he worked there, and then he went to Cardill in Western Milling, and just, you know, he taught us that ethics hometown, and that's just who I am. So, yeah, military, now I just wanted to see the world, but I always came back.
That's awesome. You picked Lemoore.
Over San Diego.
Yes.
Over San Diego.
And actually, I do, I did in 2016, I worked down in Ventura, and every weekend I'd come back home and be at my daughter's games, do that stuff. I mean, it's, you know, I just like, one of the things about me is especially sees a lot of the young kids who say, oh, I can't go to college. You can do anything you want to do. Don't let anyone stop you. And they'll be like, well, my parents can't afford it. I don't care. My parents did enough, they said, you're on your own. And another thing at heart, though, is I was telling my husband today, who's here supporting me, is that, you know, I saw a young sailor today and he just reported in, and he just said, I go to Lemoore. And I said, you're going to save money, you're not going to get in trouble, and you're going to get your qualifications, your education. Be thankful. So, that's the way to look at it, so.
Awesome.
Hey.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I think you and Mr. Plort got something in common. You chose, I mean, you had the opportunity to go to San Diego and he's trying to come back for a third time. You guys are crazy.
It's that niceness where you can call your neighbor and say, hey, I'm running late, can you watch the kids? Or, hey, you're calling the neighbors, the kid's running around the street, and that's what I love. And like I said, my son's at the skate park. We go all over to skate parks everywhere, and I really would like to see that. I mean, I've been to different ones, I mean, I have pictures of them. But just the kids need stuff, and we're doing a great job so far. I'm very, very impressed with all the changes. I mean, more's growing, and it's kind of, I mean, more things. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Was that our last one, Ms. Vanegas? I'd like to say something to all of them. I mean, it's like Mr., well, Chief said, this is not going to be an easy, oh, am I allowed to say something or no?
No, no, you can't. Is that all?
Yes, I was just going to say, this concludes our applicants. Council will have the opportunity at regular session to take action, and if council has any comments, that would be the time.
Yeah, oh, okay. So, I should have just waited. Story of my life, huh? Yeah, Chief, you're, you hit the nail right on the head, man. This is, I, this is not going to be an easy choice. I, I'm not joking. I wish there was a string of seats up here, we could let all of you guys sit. I really do. But I also want to thank all of you guys for coming out, because it's not easy getting up here and talking in front of everybody. I, I mean, I'm, I'm still nervous and I've been doing it, and, yeah, I, I like to thank all of you guys for coming out. I really do. And it means a lot. It means a lot to let people know that you guys care, that everybody cares. I just didn't realize this many people cared, man. That's, that's a lot. Good job.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I don't want to steal your thunder, but I'm going to.
No, still it.
It's, you know, to have this many people come, and, and I know there's even more out there that would have, that would have lined up, and, and that's what I like about this city and I like about the people in this city. It's just, it's great. I, I love it, you know, and I just want to thank you all for doing it, for putting in your application, and it's going to be a hard decision. It's going to be a hard decision, but at the end of the day, when, you know, whoever's chosen, we all just need to stand behind them and let's do what's best for the city and, and move forward, you know? But I just want to say once again, thank you very much. I really do appreciate it. I know the other people out there in the city appreciate it too, you know? So, thank you.
All I have to say is this, amen to both of you all. Second and third, that. We're going into closed session. We're going to go into conference with legal counsel, existing litigations, government code section 549, 56.9 D1. Sandridge Partners LP versus California Regional Water Quality Control Board, Central Valley Regional, region, city of Lemoore as real parties and interests. Case number 19CECGO2306. Two, conference with real property negotiator, government code section 549, 56.8, property 400 to 500 South 19th Avenue, city of Lemoore, nine, 10 acres, assessor parcel number 023400/001 023/400/002 and 023/400/003, 12 acres, APN 024/051030. Agency negotiator, Mr. Nathan Nelson, city manager, negotiating party, GSFH LLC, a California limit liability company under negotiation price and terms. Three, conference with real property negotiators, government code section 549, 56.8, property 308E Street, city of Lemoore, lease of building assessor, assessors, parcel number 020/050/003. Agency negotiator, Mr. Nathan Nelson, city manager, negotiating party, Valley Pure Lemoore LLC, a California limit liability company under negotiation price and terms. By the way, any comments from the public on closed session? I see there's none. The time is 6:47. Adjourned. There's nothing to put out on closed session. Call to order. Welcome to Lemoore City Council Chambers, 429 C Street. First, I'm going to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence for the pilot of Lemoore. Thank you. Evocation, Ms. Kimberly Nelson.
Oh, my Jesus, we just come before you, Lord, and we ask you, Lord God, to be a part of this meeting. We invite you into this meeting. Father God, I ask that you would be with our leaders, and Lord God, that you would be with our community members. Lord God, I pray for your healing over our city. I pray for your healing over our leaders. Father God, I ask you, Lord Jesus, to be with their mouths as you are with Aaron and Moses's mouth. Father God, that whatever you would have them do, that you would move them according to your will. And Father God, be with our community, Father God, to love on our leaders and help our leaders to love on us. I pray, Father God, that all the things that are to take place from this moment on, Father God, this is a new beginning right here, right now. Father God, I ask you, Lord Jesus, that you would direct our steps according to your will and your purpose, Father God. Lord Jesus, what lies behind is behind us, Lord God, but what is before us, Lord Jesus, guide us. We do not want to go, Lord God, where you are not. I ask you, Father God, that you would help us to keep our eyes to you, Lord God, and not to the things that have happened yesterday. Father God, we let those things go. And I ask, Father God, those that you have chosen to fill these seats, I ask you, Father God, that you would put your hand upon them, because you have put a mantle upon them to be leaders, to help us, to guide us, Lord God. And Lord God, I ask that you would be in charge, that you would go before them. And I ask for this group of people that are sitting before us, Father God. I thank you for them. I ask for your protection over them, over their families, Father God, and I ask that they would seek you, Lord God. I ask that they would pray for us, and I pray that we would pray for them, Lord. We can do nothing without you, Father God. This city belongs to you, Lord God, and I ask, Father God, that you would cause it, Lord Jesus, to represent you better than we have. Help us, Father God, to shine your light. And Lord, the pilot that passed, I pray over his family right now. Lord God, wrap your healing arms around them and comfort them all the only way that you can. We cannot, but you can. Minister to them through, through us and through your Holy Spirit. I pray, Father God, that you would change our words, that we would speak positive, and the things that happened yesterday, we would no longer speak, Lord God. It's not necessary. But Father God, let us speak over our people in a positive way. I release, Lord God, because you have called me to this place, in the name of Jesus, I release this into your hands. And I thank you for this city because it is a wonderful city. It is a beautiful city, full of beautiful people. And Lord God, we surrender ourselves into your hands. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Beautiful. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unadulterable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Real call, Ms. Vanegas.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Lyons?
Here.
Mayor Neal?
Here.
Thank you. The agenda approval additions and or deletions, are there any? I see there's none. Moving on to public comment. Any public comments regarding something that is not on the agenda? You can expound on that, state your name, address. You have three minutes. I see there's no public comments. Going on to ceremony and presentation, section one. One to ask one, recognition of Lemoore Recreation Department volunteers and sponsors. Mr. Flick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Yes, tonight, we're here to recognize and honor our volunteers. Our volunteers run our summer day camp program. In our Parks and Rec Department, our summer day camp program is our largest pro, our second largest program that we operate, and we could not run this program without volunteers. We have sponsors that sponsor the volunteers, so we're going to recognize those folks that are here as well tonight. But someone I'd like to also recognize is Sheila Taylor. Sheila Taylor is a mentor to these, to these volunteers. She works with them year in and year out and does a really good job of showing them how, how it is to, to get yourself prepared for the workforce. Over the years, we've actually hired quite a few of these volunteers, but I don't want to steal Sheila's, too much of her thunder. I want to introduce her right now. Sheila Taylor, come on up.
Thank you. It's great to be here tonight. Another thing before we honor all our sponsors and our teenagers is I have two part-time employees that would have been with us for three years, and you don't get to meet our part-time employees very often, but these two young ladies have worked with me for three years and they run our summer camp. Jason and I both have many responsibilities, and we have average 55 campers a week. Our maximum week this year was 68 campers. These two do the scheduling now. They have actually taken over many of the responsibilities, and I'd like to introduce Victoria Chavez and Kyle Smith and give them a big round of applause. One of the best parts of my job is to work with wonderful community members, and you're going to meet a lot of them here tonight. And for the last 14 years, I've got to know some of them very well, and they mean the world to me. And every time Jason and I ask, they, they raise their hand and they come and they help, and we couldn't do what we do without them. So, I'm going to introduce the volun, the sponsor, and then I'll introduce who they sponsored, and they can meet their volunteer, and if you can come up front so we can have a group picture. I want you to know, these teenagers were outside tonight, and there's 10 of them, and they were all talking and, and having a great time, and they didn't know each other very well before summer started because they came from different schools. And to see the bond they created because of these two paid staff members and everything that we tried to teach them this summer, it just means that you two did your job very well. So, once again, congratulations. So, our first sponsor is Jim Cheney. Jim, come on up. Officer Cheney. We needed one more sponsor, and we had a wonderful teenager that we didn't have a sponsor for, and she actually went to a church and asked for a sponsor, and Mr. Cheney said yes, and, and she ended up having a wonderful summer. So, come on up here, we're going to give you gifts. And he sponsored Sierra Moreno. Sierra. Next, there's a club that has sponsored volunteers for 20 years. They sponsor two a year. If I need three, they sponsor three. It's whatever we need. The Lemoore Lions Club, come on up. The Lemoore Lions Club sponsored Reese Espinoza and Christopher Staley. I have to tell a quick story. I know we're, we don't have much time, but we had a special needs volunteer, a teenager, Christopher Staley, who wanted to work in day camp very badly last year. I went to the Lions Club and I took him and I introduced him, and they saw how excited he was, and so they sponsored another one, just, and he was so good, and the kids liked him so much last year that he came back, and he was one of their favorite volunteers. He had the opportunity to go off to college, and he's autistic and he never thought he would, but we sent him off yesterday, and we were all so proud of him. And the Lions Club helped him get ready for college because of the two years of experience he had with us.
Awesome.
Another great organization that whatever we ask for, they always come through. I, I have just gotten to know them so well, and I am just so happy that I can call them my friends. The Kings Lions Club is next. You can all come. Come on, don't be shy. We got room. Get up there. The Kings Lions Club sponsored Lily Julah and Liliana Flores. Lily Julah also, besides volunteering 200 hours in day camp, works at Wild Water Adventures, and she's at work tonight. Next, the same situation. You, I can't, every time I ask, they never say no. They help with everything, our community events. They help keep our community events safe. They have sponsored volunteers ever since I've worked here, and that's the volunteers and police.
All right.
They sponsored Jose Lopez and Trayvon Gaffney. Come on up. There is one sponsor that couldn't be here tonight, and they're a first-time sponsor. Luis Hernandez runs Lemoore Louise Hernandez runs Lamore Cultural Arts. And her and Hernandez were in my office, and she found out that we didn't quite have enough money for everyone. And so, three days ago, she gave us a check so everyone can get their gift at the end. These teenagers volunteered 200 hours. And because of the sponsors, we're able to give them a gift of $200 at the end. So Lamore Cultural Arts can't be here tonight, but they sponsored Matthew Lorenko, so please come up. And then there's one more lady that's in our Witness for Fitness program. And it's about, what is this about? Witness for Fitness, big program, 70 seniors come every Tuesday and Thursday. I said, well, we use teenagers and we try to teach them some skills so they'll, they'll be able to go out and get a job and be ready for the workforce. And she goes, well, I want to get involved. And she did, and that is Betty Teeters. And she sponsored Michelle and Stevens. And then, the American Legion Post 100. About 11 years ago, we didn't know much about the American Legion Post 100, but they met in our building, so we went over there and we said, hey, we're going to redo the Little League field, and, and we want you guys to get involved. Can you cook for 150 volunteers? And they looked at me like I was crazy, but they came out, and that was the start of a wonderful relationship. They, once again, they, they do whatever we need. And they're a great group, and they've all served their country. So the next one is American Legion Post 100. They sponsored Julissa Alvarado. So we have a lot of family members here who support these teens. So if you, if we could take a picture, that would be great. So parents, start clicking. And also, other opportunities for teenagers that are at the recreation center. We heard about tonight, you know, about teenagers. We use high school teenagers at our community dances. We use them at our community events. All high school teenagers need to have 40 hours of community service. So we do whatever we can to give them the opportunity to do that. So if there's any teenager that doesn't have their hours, please send them our way, and we will make it happen. Once again, these sponsors are more than just sponsors. They're our, our friends, and they're our neighbors, and we couldn't do what we do without them. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Before we take the picture, I am so sorry. I have a, I saved this one for last because it was so special. Alana Silva was actually in our camp, and she was one of the oldest campers. And I could tell that, you know, she, she, she wasn't feeling camp. You know, she was almost 13, and you had to be 13 to be a volunteer. So I went to Kyle and Victoria, and I said, I think we need to make her a volunteer. And I think she's ready. And the attitude the next day after she got that job was just, it's, she was a changed girl. And she did so remarkable. So she needed a sponsor. And Alana has a new stepfather who supports her 100%. And so I called Henry Campos, if you can come up. And Henry said, of course. And we saw a change in this girl, and we were so proud of her. And so I'd like to thank Henry for all the support that he gave his daughter. And Alana, you did a wonderful job. By the way, Henry Campos, a wonderful human being that gives a lot of time to the PAL program. And he works with children, and whatever we ask, Henry's there. So a big round of applause, and I am so sorry, Alana. So now we're ready.
All right, ready, guys?
Yeah.
Okay. Department and City Manager Report, Section 2. 2-1, Department and City Manager Report. Mr. Nathan Olsen, City Manager.
So we're going to bypass the department report tonight, and due to time, so we can move on. Thank you.
On to Section 3, Consent Calendar. 3-1, Approval Minutes, Regular Meeting, July 16, 2019. 3-2, Approval or Rita, Notice of Resolution 2019/17 of Correct. Public Hearing Date, on Resolution Approved, May 21, 2019. 3-3, Approval Agreement Between the City of Lamore and Lamore Volunteer Fire Department Association for Ancestry Service. 3-4, Approval Authorization of Purchase and Install of 15-ton HVAC Unit at the Civic Auditorium Location of 435 C Street. 3-5, Approval Agreement for Personal Legal Service between the City of Lamore and LaZano Smith Attorney at Law. 3-6, Approval Accusations on Real Property APN 024/051/030, Resolution 2019/30. 3-7, Approval Guaranteed Maximum Price of Construction for Water Treatment Plants. 3-8, Approval Declaring Public Nuisance in Ordinance. Public Hearing Regarding Weed Embatement, Resolution 2019/31. 3-9, Approval Agreement Between the City of Lamore and the County of Kings for Provision of Animal Control Service. 3-10, Approval Revised City Council Meeting Scheduled For the remain, the reminder of the 2019 Calendar Year Resolution 2019/32, Rescinding Resolution 2019/18. Public, would you like to expound on this? Want to pull any items? I'm bringing it back to the council. Would you like to pull? Well, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent calendar.
Turn your mic off.
Oh, I apologize. There you go. Forgot to push the button. Make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Going on to Public Hearing, Section 4. 4-1, Confirming and Diagram of Assessment of Annual Levy for Fiscal Year 2019-2020 for Landscaping and Lighting. Maintenance District Number 1, LLMD Zone 1 through 13. Resolution 2019-33. And Public Facilities Maintenance District Number 1, PFMD Zone 1 through 9. Resolution 2019-34. Mr. Ray?
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor and members of the City Council. Every year, the city is required to perform an annual assessment for all LMDs and PFMD landscape districts. The assessments determines whether the annual fees, which are paid by property owners, remains the same or need to be increased. The engineer's report determined that this year's assessment stayed within the original maximum assessment, therefore not requiring ballots to be sent out to residents. Of course, there's a lot of the report. But if you have any questions, I have our consultant engineer who put the report together to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council? I'm going to go ahead and open it to the public. Anybody want to expound on this? See, there's none. Closing it to the public, bringing it back to the council. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Public hearing, right? You just did it. Okay. Okay. That was it.
Make a motion to approve the engineer's report and the adoption of the resolutions.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Going on to, 4-2. Annexation and include, inclusion of the additional territories, Track 839 and Zone 11 of Landscape and Lighting. Maintenance District Number 1 and Confirming the Diagram and Assessment of Annual Levy of Fiscal Year 2019-2020 for Landscape and Lighting. Maintenance District Number 1. Resolution 2019/35, prepare it.
Okay, on May 21, 2019, the City Council approved Resolution 2019-17. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Lamore with intention to annex and include additional territories in, in Landscape and Lighting District Number 1. And the City of Lamore and Levy and Collect Annual Assessments in such annexed territory for Fiscal Year 2019-20 and thereafter. In order for the annexation to be approved and the assessments levied on the lots located in the existing residential development that comprise, comprises of Track Number 656, which is existing, adjacent to existing Zone Number 11, and the annexation territory, which are adjacent developments to the west of the current development, the majority of the ballots submitted by the property owners west of the, within the boundary of the added and original territory must consent to the annexation and levy of the assessment. Votes will be tabulated during the council, during this council meeting. If the ballots submitted and not withdrawn in favor of the proposed annexation and increase exceed the assessment ballot submitted and not withdrawn in opposition, then the added territory may be included in the LMD Zone 1, LMD Number 1, Zone 11, and increased levy assessment for Fiscal Year 2019-20. The initial notice that accompanied the ballot was mailed in English and in Spanish to all registered homeowners. Staff held a public meeting at the golf course on June 24th, June 25th, 2019, and visited each of the existing homes on July 10th, 2019, to ensure that all residents were aware and received their ballots. A maximum assessment of $116 can be applied on the annual per lot basis. So this is kind of complex. I have Jim McGuire here, maybe to kind of better explain the procedure more thoroughly. Jim, if you don't mind.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, you have the engineers. You previously approved the engineer's report that set what we're proposing to do, which is annexation of Track 8 to Zone 11 of District Number 1, and to increase the assessments for both the existing homes and the new annexation area. To cover tonight, you would open the public hearing, the voting regarding that proposal. And then at, at the conclusion of the public hearing, we'll tabulate the ballots and give you the results of that ballot tabulation. And if it's successful, then this would be the assessments that would be levied for this year rather than what you just approved in the annual report. If it doesn't pass, then the annexation won't go through and we'll levy what was in the original engineer's report for this year.
Okay, I have a question, if I may.
Listen to one another. They're, they're same landscape improvements.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else on the council? I'm going to open it to the public. Anybody want to expound on this? See, there's none. Closing from the public, bringing it back to the council. Go ahead.
Give you the results soon as you have to adopt the resolutions.
Okay. Ms. Vanegas? Okay. Give her a couple of minutes.
Where, where'd Frank go? While, while they're doing their two minutes, I got a question for you real quick. So that 15-ton unit that we're going to put next door, can we put it on this one and give this, our old one over there?
This will nearly cool, which we have next to it.
Well, yeah, but that 15-ton will cool this place nicely and good. So that's a no, right?
Just run the chilipod, okay? That's all you got to do. Pipe it over. Couple of valves, you're good.
I tried. Everybody looks like they're hot. I think we all are. Yeah. Just about to turn that green light on you, Janie.
Of the ballots, there were 38 ballots were received. All of them were no, for a total of 4,408. Again, all 38 voted no.
Let's move. Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. On to the next.
Okay. Going on to New Business, Section 5. 5-1, Reporting Recommendations, Apartment and City Council Applicants for District C and District E. City Manager?
Where's this, Janie?
Once again, we're going to defer this to our elections representative from the city, Janie Vanegas.
Good evening, council. As you know, before you, you had the opportunity at the 5:30 study session to review the applications that were in the agenda packet, as well as listen to the applicants who were here. At this time, you have the opportunity to take action on that item. You have the opportunity to discuss. And once you've finished discussing, I will- You have the opportunity to discuss, and once you've finished discussing, I will accept nominations. So the first district, as there are only four applicants, suggestion is to go with district C because there are four applicants. Would you like to discuss any further? I will entertain a motion at this time.
Like to make a motion to.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, public, yes, it's important.
I'm gonna open it, public comment. I see none. Go back to the council.
Make a motion to nominate Christopher Scaldi for district C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I would do a roll call vote. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lyons?
Aye.
Mayor Neal?
Aye.
As that is all three, your new council member for district C is Chris Scaldi. For district E, I will enter, I will accept nominations for district C. I'm sorry, district E. Apologies.
I'm gonna send it to the public before we take a motion. Public? Any comments? Okay, I see there's none, bringing it back to. Any discussion from council?
Uh, yeah, I just got something I'd like to say, and I probably should have said it for C also, but once again, I greatly appreciate everybody that applied. It, it really says a lot, it really does, and there's a lot of, everybody on this list, they're, the city can't lose right now, so I'm pretty excited to see where it goes from here.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for Shelley Reese.
Do I have a second? Motion dies due to lack of a second. We have another motion, entertain another motion.
I'd like to nominate John Plord. I can't believe he's back here to do it, but, uh, that's where my nomination goes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lyons?
Aye.
Mayor Neal?
No.
Motion dies due to lack of consensus. I will entertain another motion.
Excuse me. I'd like to nominate Jim Kilner.
Councilmember Lyons nominated Jim Kilner. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll do a roll call. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lyons?
Aye.
Mayor Neal?
No.
Motion dies due to lack of a consensus. I will entertain another motion.
Patricia Matthews?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do a roll call vote. Councilmember Brown?
No.
Motion dies due to lack of consensus. I will entertain another motion.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
To nominate, uh, Lupe Capozzi.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I will do a roll call vote. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lyons?
No.
Motion dies to to lack of a consensus. I will entertain another motion.
I'd like to nominate Tegan Winters.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I will do a roll call vote. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lyons?
Aye.
Mayor Neal?
No.
Motion dies due to lack of consensus. I will entertain another motion.
Um, go ahead.
Make a motion to nominate Gwendolyn Landris.
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lyons?
Aye.
Mayor Neal?
No.
Motion dies due to lack of a consensus. I will entertain another motion.
I'd like to nominate Hugh Allen.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I will do a roll call vote. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lyons?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Consensus was received for district E for Hugh Allen. If I could have. The next.
Go ahead. Okay, we're gonna go five dash two, administration of oath of office, newly appointed council members. Ms. Vanegas?
Oh, Chris, you gotta turn that thing off.
Is Mr. Allen here?
Mr. Allen is not here.
Yeah, take the oath officer. Where did Mr. Allen go?
As Mr. Allen is not in the audience, I will do the administration of the oath of office for Christopher Scaldi. I will have you stand before me, raise your right hand. You do not have to repeat after me. I will state everything, and then you say I do. I, Christopher Scaldi, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations.
Oh, I have the original.
You are official. Now, you will please take a vacant seat next to councilmember Brown.
Janie, I'm gonna try to call Mr. Allen. See if he can come down.
Three eight six. Zero five eight seven. Welcome aboard.
Do you share mine? We're right here.
Next time?
We'll have to swear in the next meeting. We're unable to seat district C due to the cand, district E due to the candidate not being here, so we will, um, seat that district at the eight-twenty meeting.
City council comments?
Somewhere here. Button's right, right here.
Excuse me. Okay.
Go ahead. Now you can. You're good to go. Anything to say?
First and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys for having the, uh, the trust in me, and, and I promise you guys, the, the people of Lamore, that I'll do the best that I can to, to serve you and to do what's right for, for everybody in the city. I hope that the constituents in district C will be at least content with me and give me the opportunity to not only be content, but to be happy with me and, uh, come next general election to have the confidence in, in, in my leadership skills to, uh, to lead them for the remainder of the term that, that, uh, Mr. Billingsley had. Um, I know he did a great job, and, and I hope to, uh, fill in his shoes and, and, and be proud of myself and, and do what I need to do for, for the city of Lamore. So, thank you again, city councilman. Thank you very much.
So, Brown?
Just like to say that, uh, I wanna thank once again for everybody putting in, uh, going through the, the application process, a lot of good candidates, uh, you know, uh, we're still a team, we're still a team here. Just because we're up here doesn't mean that, you know, we still need your input. We need to know the good, the bad, the ugly, the sad. I think of everything. We need that input, okay? We cannot do this without you, the people of Lamore. And this council has to work together as a team also. We're gonna have our differences, we're gonna have, you know, we're not gonna agree all the time, but that doesn't mean that we hate each other, you know? That's what we tell our children to do, and that's what we need to do. We need to lead by example. So, that's all I have to say, and I, I thank everybody for being here and, and, uh, putting up with the heat, so thank you.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to thank everybody also, Ms. Winters, Ms. Reese, Mr. Plord, uh, Ms. Matthews, Mr. Kilner, chief, um, Ms. Capozzi, Mr. Allen, Mrs. Landris, Mr. Redarmel, Mr. Reed, V Hill, Mr. Vornick, and Mr. Scaldi. That, that, that says a lot. I, I can't say it enough. You know, that many people put it, did I miss someone? Oh, I thought someone said I missed somebody's name. But, uh, yeah, it, it, like I said, guys, we can't lose. It, it can't. You guys know where we're coming from. It's, uh, the future's bright compared to where we've been. There, so, there, I've said it. That's all I've got to say.
Yes, I wanna say, I appreciate everybody coming out and the people that really love Lamore, and, um, it showed, um, how many people applied. Uh, I wanna say to the ones that were here religiously at council meetings, that's why I picked, uh, or went the way I did, is, um, I looked at their actions, seeing them here every council meeting, they probably was there more than I was. So, um, I'm gonna say that, and I'm gonna leave it like that, and I wanna say God bless you, and I'm gonna give it to our city manager.
So, good evening, mayor and council members. Congratulations, councilmember Scaldi. So typically, when we seat new council members, we reorg the, the council and commissions and boards, so I'm looking for direction from council on how we want to, if you want staff to bring a reorg back and in what capacity on eight-twenty? I'd like to have staff to bring the reorg back and also, once we go through that, then look at boards and commissions. At the same time, correct? Uh, well, I think it's, uh, the boards and commissions might have to wait because the boards and commissions have to, if, if during the reorg, if there's a different, I mean, the mayor and the mayor protesting, still have to look at the boards and commissions to give their nomination. Does that make sense? Okay, so we'll bring the reorg council on eight-twenty, and then the first meeting in September, we will reorg boards and commissions. Is that what I'm getting direction? Yes, sir, because we have. Do I have consensus? Two-fifths of the council that's been changed, so it's probably a good idea.
Agreed.
So, one, two?
No.
I will agree.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, I think we got the phone call we was looking for.
What'd she say?
The time is now eight forty-three. We are adjourned. God bless everyone.